Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the work session for school board for November 3rd. Recognition of guests, any? Recognition of meeting minutes for next week for October 3rd, October 13th. Regular session, seven to eight, 31:00 PM. Next week, we will have a presentation of the Pride and Promise Board. Mr. Brungel, you want to say about that?
So, we have a very special group. They were all U.S. American, so we did a pre-recording of a video on what the Pride and Promise was distributed to them, and we're certainly going to be able to show that during the meeting, so we can recognize that group's identity.
We're going to do a still picture.
Still picture.
But Mr. McGee and Mr. Anderson did go down for the presentation during the day.
Okay. Also, next week, Mr. Rich will give a presentation on analysis of longitudinal achievement.
Now, just to prelude, it's part of Business Times, a proprietary formula where a tracking achievement of districts for seventeen, eighteen years is part of the larger Business Times organization, so we will not only be able to compare ourselves to Lawrence County, but also to the entire state. And quite frankly, there's no bonus points for poverty, or IEP, or whatever. What's your achievement, and they give you some. So, last, last month, we look back, three, five years, and we gave you a flavor of where we were in the spring of '21, where we were when school opened, where we are now, and what the teachers are doing with the data. And then, quite frankly, I was thinking about you, and it was eight years ago, I came on before, one of the reasons I came on for two years, getting pounded by all of my cohorts down in Pittsburgh, asking me, "Oh, where, where are your kids going to school at?" I got this lift, came out just for a bit of time, and went over to the road, because we were five. So, anyway, I know that achievement was near and dear to your heart, and you're leaving us soon. I know Mr. Dick Fouse was similarly motivated, and then, quite frankly, if, if, if you, if you look at the longitudinal analysis, like I had, I, I think you have individual like, maybe?
I'll pretend you're out, I'll tell myself.
You can tell yourself.
Yeah, item number three for next week, or do we have any standing committees' reports?
That's what?
Yeah, you've been? Uh, we, uh, I've been to two IU meetings so far, and it's been going very well. They have a large ESAT project going live at the, at the IU in Rose City, and it's mostly completed, except for some additional parts of the roof, like near the server room at the IU, but it's nearly completed, and, uh...
Not very important stuff. Your server would be covered by hard- proofed roof?
Oh, no, it's, it's...
You can do that anytime.
It's almost...
Right, they keep everything under control, but yeah.
Sorry, sorry. Uh, but it's been a, it's been a good experience so far. Board is made up of members from Mercer County, Butler, and Lawrence County, uh, counties, so it's, it's been going well. But the biggest thing is the HVAC project going on, and that was approved way before I came in.
If I could, if, if, and anybody else who's worked with the IU, let me know. Um, do, do the IU's in Pennsylvania do anything to have some kind of centralized technology assistance, or consulting that they do, any kind of high, or medium, or...
Not that you're...
...or higher levels?
So, the reason I ask is, you know, in Ohio, they do, and it seems to be pretty good of a boss at county school. I think, again, I'll refer to Jeff and Tim. I, I think relationships and partnerships with the IU have changed over time. I'm, I'm, I'm going to say, I'm, I'm talking a generation ago, maybe twenty, twenty-five years. I think the IU had not only diversity of service, but competitive service. So, for, for example, um, we look for different routine PP options from private providers, and in the past life, maybe we did that with the IU. Those, those are just special education services. Get on the IU branding of Wilmington's, or, or whatnot, but, uh...
So, you're on the board, so if there's any areas of discussion about what can the IU do to help out schools, they had some way to provide some type of affordable technology services to all schools? That would be an area where we're actually concerned about.
It's actually been a, it's been a topic of discussion, especially after the last meeting, about technology, especially with STEM, and what services that help with local districts.
Yeah, I'm thinking more like the stuff that, like, when we hire a consultant to help out Rob or something, or do any kind of analysis on the network, or alt pen testing, all those kinds of things. You just have a couple of guys, you know, they could be busy everywhere, and it wouldn't be the markup you would get, like in commercial, you know?
But mainly, they were talking, mainly, they were talking about, Kevin, there's things for technology services as far as adding to your curriculum.
Tim, any thoughts on what we used to do in the past?
At one time, when we first started getting into computers, we used to work with them before bikes and bases came along, we used to do a lot of our repairs, and running our computers and our software, but I think that's offensive. We ended up hiring our own people, but I don't know what they were doing.
Well, and, and it's, and it's not that, I don't, I don't want to poo-poo the quality of service, that's not what I'm saying. Tim's right, and some of their supplemental services, that, that's, that's their battle to fight. They've, they've got to find a balance of how are they compensating their people, making cost of removal.
And, and over time, they were a larger entity, twenty years ago. For instance, we have over five hundred employees, now they're down to below two hundred. So, I mean, it's, it's a smaller entity.
A hundred and a half, a high?
Uh, a couple hundred, yeah. I was looking at hundreds here. I don't have the direct figure, but it's, it's been a decrease by over fifty percent over the past year. But they do offer services throughout the county, but it's a matter of if you pay for it, and that's to be at a competitive rate. I know that this board, we'd gone out, instead of working with the IU on certain...
Yep.
But, yeah, so that's the biggest, uh, takeaways, was the HVAC project, and then we did have discussions about technology. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Uh, administrative reports, uh, Mr. Seg.
Um, our meeting in about February, Justin, vehicles running our eight-way light system. There's something that's been happening quite often, um, in high-traffic areas, where people don't know what the red lights mean. But in my meeting, I've tried to express to the drivers, make sure we do our part as far as doing all our proper procedures, and putting our lights on, making sure people are well aware of when we're putting our lights on, especially on a 422. We have a couple stops out there, where the traffic is coming from mother that way, that we've got to slow traffic down ourselves, slow the bus down, let them know that we're going to be stopping, so they keep their lights on a long way away, to get the traffic slowed down, but we got people passing them around the left side. So, and also, keep, keep driving the traffic, because traffic is not stopping, don't even let kids out. But that's what we can do, that's our kitchen, our part, but we can't, we can't control what's going on around us, but we got to do our part for the best. I think I can do that.
Kind of drive everyone's vehicle, know what this is doing. I think, too, you could make PSP bears aware.
I already did, and that's what I do, if somebody constantly runs a...
Huh? You got a connection?
Yes. But we call them, we tell them, "This is happening often," and they put a car out there, and they did that last week, and, but, they can catch somebody every day, but that's what we do. And there's certain buses, you run the Ashcam, we don't have any.
Yeah.
The dialing number is different.
I'm sure the police department, appreciate it, like, of having something correct.
It wouldn't have to get every bus, but there's ones that were having problems.
Well, three or four lane highways are always a problem.
People don't...
People, people don't, don't...
That's what I try to tell the drivers, we're not letting kids cross either, so we're already protected, so they were letting them out on the door side, so. I don't want them getting caught up in what all the traffic is doing, concentrate on what we're doing, let our kids out on the right side, but still, if you think traffic is crazy, don't do anything. But our job is let them out on his side, but I don't want them, oh, they're trying to get placed and all this stuff, and taking their eyes off what's going on, that's what I don't want them to do.
Right, that's what I can't... Is it, do you have any information on the bus accident on 79th, other than what happened?
I think the bus happened, that's what brings the bus.
Where did the back of the front go?
Why? That's what's, see, I don't know why, that's the problem. If I came home that way, I'm thinking, you know, you off-ramp the front and back out there, and I had to come to, come to a whole... Usually, got to stay back when you're driving, you know, but also with a subnose bus, that's what that was. When you're driving one of them, you feel like you're close to something anyways, you know, so when you're close, you know, so you're wanting to back them, so that's what I don't understand, what went on there, I don't.
I did, I did.
Driving a subnose bus, your person's seat.
Yeah. I've heard that, um, Eastbrook Road, down from Ridge and Breeze, Ridge and Breeze, in the, uh, bad...
Bad area.
Bad area, but another problem area, that just...
No, that's a problem area. Change that route a little bit, or another bus comes up that road to get that kid on the door side, so they don't have to cross. There's a lot of roads where we don't have a bus going down one way and coming back, that's what happens when you do a lot of changes, so you got to try to, you got a bad area, get the kid on the door side, so that's where we're least safe on that one, until we can, we can go down both right ways and make kids not cross. There's going to be some crossing, but that's why we have the light. In dangerous areas, we try to make sure they're doors open. But we have a few stops that, you know, we need very carefully, even downtown Eastbrook is bad. They've been down there, the lights are on, and these trucks, the trucks will come flying down through there, too.
Everyone goes thirty-five.
Yeah, like I said, we probably end up in the living rooms.
Yeah.
But, uh, also, I'm also, got another class going on, I got two people in training right now, we got six hours in already.
Somebody's going to be driving, and also, we're getting our trucks ready for this month.
I'm ready.
Ready. But we're looking good for backups and our drivers?
No. Like I said, when you got a stop, that doesn't mean they're ready to go, because a lot of people, those are the suburbs, they call, like, "I don't think I want them," you know, especially calling at five in the morning, and they're like, "Yeah, I can't..." There's no win-win, and if you know somebody's going to be off, regational, yeah, you can prep somebody, but if somebody calls me at five in the morning, there's nothing I can do, I, I couldn't drive it because I don't have a bike.
Right.
We're very fortunate that Joe and Kevin, the other bus driver, like... Good man.
This truck's bad for you, correct?
Any other questions from the board?
Just the most complicated stuff we have.
Yes.
You know, they'll take an extra gun.
Check the backseat.
Um, firstly, I want to bring your attention, the health inspector was here last week and a half, and there was no issues at the high school and/or the elementary, so that's a really good, uh, hats off to the ladies in the cafeteria, they do work hard every day down. And the health inspector's pretty, uh, he's pretty tough, he checks everything. We installed a water filtration system on the high school boiler system, it never had one. We were, we were advised, uh, last year, from our inspector, checks our water, to do at the elementary, and it's made this sediment that come out of that system. High school never had any one, uh, we put it on within a week or two, we're changing the filters already. Just to get the contaminants, constantly abrading the pipes could cause problems down the road, so that was our goal, we've got it on now, so. We installed new power supply for the CNC router that the wood shop got, pretty nifty cool, Mr. Wyback, he has a pretty, pretty cool job down there. We repaired a couple leaks on toilets in one under the hallway, we had a leak at the stadium on other toilets. Constantly have problems with toilets around here, but, uh, try to keep up with them. Uh, the girls softball field on the west side is completed, uh, we did some raking last week before the weather changed. Still be in good shape when we start the spring. Our, our next thing, maybe on State of Laurel, like to look into laser grading that field and conditioning it, and that field will be just like the others, um, all the other fields that have been done over the years. Uh, it definitely helps the draining, field doesn't drain that great, I think laser grading and cutting edges off would make a difference for us, something we can talk about later. We have a lot of stuff happening this past month, and we've got the stadium ready for the game coming up here, big game for Barton, so hopefully we can do...
About the roof project?
The roof project, they're moving on very well. Um, I was up there yesterday, they had a small section over the sixth-grade wing to do, and they had a little overhang on the front of gym where the storage, where the balls are kept, um, next to, uh, Minsky's office, and the heavy work is done, uh, they'll be doing the, uh, the flashings and, uh, stoning it, and we're, it's moved along quite well, a lot better than I expected. We had a conversation last week, and, um, I was talking with the roof, roofing company, excuse me, they normally forty and above is their time, uh, temperature to be roofing. We're borderlining, I see the kettle's shut down right now, we were at forty-five all day. Critical for the guy that watches the kettle, those days at a constant temperature and the outside temperature, so that's what they have been doing.
Do they say anything about their inspection process?
Um, it won't affect the warranty, uh, the roof at this point, uh, that's not, uh, inspector, Ken Dangler from the garden company, has been here off and on, uh, and I've been up there roofing, they're doing a quality job, so I, I don't think we'll have an issue with that. He assured me that they normally stop below forty because it could create issues later on in the roof, but the, uh, the dampness of the dew coming in, um, aren't great, they have done it in certain circumstances, there's problems, but they will not do it right now. Given that they wait till next week, next week looks a little better, so.
Well, it, yeah, we, we've talked about the guarantees, but I think that the next time we do any project, when we had issues getting ball fields, we've got, it's down, the same way with this roof, we're supposed to be done in August, correct? And we're in November, so we got to put things in the contract, a window, we need a window, especially, but I was talking, you know what I mean, when you start to get penalties, I mean, that's what you do, I think, if they get penalized.
Put in a penalty clause, if they're running, this date is this much.
Yeah. A lot of things are happening, especially with our COVID circumstance on, we're even getting charged a fuel, uh, supply surcharge for paint, do you know that?
Yeah.
At the Sherwood. It, it's hitting everybody.
Less than fifteen percent?
Uh, it's four percent.
We're doing pretty good.
Just everybody, we take it.
I buy all my paints out of kind of different things, but they can't get, I don't know, they have no clue, they, they won't tell them why, we showed them their orders, and they get half of what they ordered.
Well, there was that big chemical fire in Texas, and they lost the whole plant, and they're blaming you on that, but it's not just that, it's everything's by here, everything. Our lawnmower still hasn't came in yet, we ordered that back in August, July, July or August.
Some of the doors don't work, we don't need it.
But if we, if we tell them, "Don't get it," we may not even get it springtime, but yeah. Well, get it now, we'll lose four months, let it sit in the winter time, but...
You know, you're going to get an extra one, that's a lot for them, three, five. Order another box. Top one, had a record yield.
Okay, yeah.
But I'll just start to charge for the empty ones sitting at the boards, or days sitting there empty, get them out, because they can't move.
We paid thirty-eight hundred bucks on that one, two things to say, trying to do that, and right now, the same container is twenty-eight thousand.
When you pay people more money to stay home, it better work.
It worked out well.
You work, can you wait, there's a domino?
Yeah. Any other questions for it? The board?
Um, well, I possibly need your support at the elementary, um, our Spartan 200 club, kid's got a bingo, which means ten, ten, five years in a row, so all tentative kids are winning ice creams, they're going to have an ice cream social party with the, with the elementary. We continue with our diagnostic tests and progress monitoring, we adjust the IETs as we go along, um, we are seeing some kids, um, that weren't making progress in the beginning, um, now they are showing some progress, now that we have instruction and we're getting in a routine of things, so that's a positive. At my state, um, meeting I had on Friday, they're talking about what we're going to do with the IEP students and, um, the deficits that we're seeing because of COVID. They're talking about, again, I don't know if you remember me talking about compensatory education services, but it was sort of like extended two-year that I had to provide for kids, um, for the past summer because of COVID, they're talking about, again, um, making school districts that available for school districts to do again this coming summer, so hopefully you listen on what I hear about that. Um, they also discussed at my meeting that, um, you know, IEP kids are providing states, um, the state is saying that if they're out less than ten days, um, that we don't have to provide that state, so that's a little bit of relief for us because of all the students we quarantine, it has been a struggle trying to provide those services to students when they learn best, when they're in front of you, so. Um, our special ed plan with our audit that's coming up in the spring, um, it was going to be due in February, that was extended until July 30th.
Any questions from the board? Are we seeing an increase in IEPs based on all this? Any idea of percentage increase?
So, um, actually, what, we have a very good system at the elementary for our support system, so how it works down there is we have our IST teams, um, and inundated with kids right now in our IST team, getting referred every month for services because of all the deficits that we're seeing. That's why, um, as a building, we sort of identified our bubble kids were following them, and we're trying to put supports in place there, to try to eliminate the domino effect that we're seeing, um, but missing the IETs is right now, is just doing the evaluations from the end of last year, September, we haven't even started doing all of those yet, so it's going to be very busy to come, right?
Those are percentages, I mean, ten percent, fifteen percent increase?
Oh, um, typically, I'd say, we're probably looking at a twelve percent increase.
Is that kind of in line with what, I mean, did they talk about that at the conference you were at, and is that kind of in line with other districts?
So, yes, we're seeing that across, um, and again, it's Lawrence, Butler, Mercer County that I meet with at my meeting, and everyone is seeing the same thing. More, what we're seeing is the social, emotional issues and behavior issues is what we talk about more than the learning deficit, because learning deficit, we're seeing every grade level, special ed, regular ed, we're dealing with that differently, it's more of the behavior and how kids, um, haven't been in a structured setting for so long that now that they're back in school, everyone is struggling with, um, what they're doing about that. Um, a couple of the other districts have spent their extra money on getting social workers in the district, getting extra behavior specialists, um, in the district, just to sort of have an extra set of hands on, how can we handle all these behaviors. Laurel, we're very fortunate, um, because we have a good group of kids, a community for the most part, um, we are not seeing the behavior issues as much as we're seeing academics.
Do you have all the teacher's aid positions filled now?
So, no, um, again, the Kelly staff, support staff is limited, and I know you reached out and was working with the Kelly support staff, but we still have the same issue.
I relate to that.
Oh, in, in regards to special ed aides, um, I'm so short, too, um, but I have all the emergency positions filled. My life, two life skills classrooms are running short, that.
You're trying to find people to take, yes.
Yeah, yeah. In some shortage, this is just across the board.
Yeah, but...
Any additional questions? Yes?
Um, so we finished our benchmark assessment, um, we talked about diagnostic last time, which is what Greg always put on the C, benchmark is where the kid should be proficient by the end of the grade, so we anticipate those to be lowered at the beginning of the year, so after going through those and looking at those, and then looking back to pre-COVID first benchmarks, we're actually not that far behind pace, which is kind of encouraging to know we're starting to close those gaps and getting there, so that's, that's encouraging to see that. We also had Red Ribbon Week, um, which is about being drug-free, a different theme day, the kids wore different things, they talked about being drug-free, there was announcements and information to all of that. We were able to have our family math and reading night, which I thought was a pretty good success, it was about two hundred kids and parents together, all together, almost as nice to get a book, they have activities, it was more like an open forum this year, um, which I thought was nice, but they always go home with a book, some ideas, use the flashcards and things like that. We talked a little bit last month about the tutoring program is up and running now, so every grade level have the opportunity for some additional tutoring, um, teachers look at data performance in the classroom, and then they recommend to keep this referral-based program to come, so, um, different, different days of the week, I think, you know, yesterday morning, we had about thirty-five, forty kids, and then mornings seem to be better, um, I think it's easier, but after split activity, plus if transportation's an issue, as long as you're stuck, you know, they could take a bicycle bus in and grab a shuttle and come down, so that seems to be a better, a better turnout for the mornings, so we're hoping to close those gaps, and the program is trying to provide, we talked about extra time, closing in that extra time. And a great champion, the elementary is a great champion.
Extremely difficult factor is that often we think of tutoring that you're going to tutor, in many cases, you're going to your classroom teacher, and this is an opportunity for someone who's delivering the first-time instruction to you, and that has identified whatever gaps you may need to, uh, work on those gaps, so, you know, one, one of the advantages of paying existing staff to work with their kids outside of contracted hours is who knows the better? So, um, while I'm thinking about it, that, that came out of conversations Dan and I had with three through six faculty, we had grade-level meetings, thank you to you and your staff, you know, that, that pulled each and every grade level, as far as having the right players on the bus, we do, the bus is moving in the right direction, so, um, that little tidbit, if you will, something that's out, was mentioned as, um, and that was brought by a teacher that they've got, um, beneficial, you know, outside of standing in the tutoring room, they're working with their kids, sorry to interrupt that.
Good, one problem, I thought, so is a longer time for math and mind research, is that, we see, is that helping close those gaps?
I, I mean, based on what we're seeing so far, I think it is, I mean, you, you can't, we've talked about times, which, so, I mean, does he, because they want more time, but that's, that's definitely, it's definitely huge help, but we're able to get, not only through everything that we get through, but actually get deeper into the content of...
Is, is that going to be permanent, something that's...
We were hoping to launch it last year, but COVID wouldn't let us, but now that it's started, thinking that's something that we've been working on, um, that if we, we're looking to see that happen.
Research supports achievement related to a nine-minute LA block, okay? So, as we rotate or flex the group, we have reading opportunities every day, so we now have, uh, three ninety-minute blocks, they have a special, they have a lunch, correct?
Yeah.
And resap.
And resap, and resap, yes.
But, think about this, remember all those previous conversations about they get, when do they get math, when do they get things? One of those blocks now, they have an LA block of ninety minutes, they have a math block... One of those blocks now, so they have an E L A block of ninety minutes, they have a math block of ninety minutes, they have a science social studies block of ninety minutes. The kids are getting science and social studies instruction every day. It's not the priority of math or E L A, but some of those past arguments of, well, they had four teachers at this grade level. They had three, they got this many minutes, that's all gone. Whether you have three or four, it's the same block. And that was another thing that the teachers respond to, that the number of grade levels, uh, reported too satisfactorily.
So we had some band members from the high school come down as well, some things the elementary leaders make it around. Like the cheer one parades, like in their current trophy suit, much of stuff like that. You know, it, just with that and then the family math and reading night and the fall part, it's nice to get people back in the building. This is the first party we've had where we were able to have the P T O men and bring parent volunteers. It was just, everybody did a great job, great time, so, um, you know. It was a nice month of being able to, school coming back to be part of the community, community background.
This would be, I guess, for both, Red Bulls or either Red Bulls or, or Mr. Rich. So you were talking earlier about, you know, this, this kind of rebound. Has there, has there been any studies or any thoughts put into like, is there gonna, is there expected to be a snapback? A quick bounce back repercussion based on, you know, coming back into the school and like team will boom kind of go off quickly? Because maybe they aren't tested and tested real well because they got it, but it didn't sink in. And now you can get it quicker than you already can complete track.
So I wish you could pull up somebody, I X L. Yeah. Okay. The thing about this, I said today, you know about the names? Take sixth grade, right? Not every sixth grader, day one, starting on a sixth grade block. In fact, the majority of the Mariner people, we have seven sixth graders who are functioning between the first and the third grade. We should have, right? I, I believe, what I think you're gonna see is those kids who started ahead, they're gonna maintain ahead. But those that are only gonna fourth or fifth grade level, they're gonna close that gap, but I don't ever think, it's never gonna be here. Okay? If we want to grow one year in one year's time, and we have some kids starting on a grade level or a little bit at a grade level, then they should finish on the next grade level, okay? Or a little bit ahead of the next grade level. But if we can get sixth graders performing at a fourth grade level or a fifth graders performing at a fourth grade level to perform somewhere between, um, six five to six nine, if you will, being halfway through or almost done. From what I saw, I, I, I think that, um, is realistic in a lot of cases. I don't think really though, we're gonna have a complete answer for three years. There, there's going to be some struggling learners, right? We got these ones out here again, and they're gonna get here, but they're not gonna get where we need them, right? Or where they need to be. Now it's another grade level, so I keep something else in mind, and I don't know how the pandemic is gonna impact this, but why R T I response intervention? Why I S T is so important? Why our Title One is so important? Is if students do not reach grade level by grade three, research shows they typically will never be on grade level. That doesn't mean they stay at secondary level, but that means that they're always playing catch up for the rest of their educational career. So, you know, Bobby Lynn does and primary teachers, that's invaluable. That's my opinion, that's not research. I'll defer to my colleagues if they, you care to share opinion about what Mr. Patterson.
So I haven't seen any research and I think it's gonna take time before, before it comes up. But looking into last year, so it's that gap of time that we shut down from like, beginning of November till mid-June. When those kids came back to us and we're looking at their progress monitoring, whether it was Title One, whether it was I S T or that, you could see, they were still making a little bit, but when we were back in person, you started to see those curves come up drastically. So, which leads to believe that in-person live instruction is the best move to provide. So we're just looking at that, yes, I would answer your question, yes, I would think there would be some sort of a rebound of the faster catch up. So I think, you know, again, this is one of the struggles that we have as, as a school district of this size. To continue to do, to be able to service the kids across the continuum, right? And, and it's just gonna, and this has even magnified that normal problem even further. Because as you said, right, you're still gonna have those kids who kept doing and learning on their own and advanced even further and now the teachers trying to service a kid two years ahead. Whenever, that's only two, three years in your entire class. Very highly, three of them, four classes. And another reason why we, when we do our flexible ribbon, that helps to shrink that thing. So it's easier for a teacher to serve the kids who might be middle to almost on, with a kid who's a grade level ahead compared to the kid who's three levels behind and the kid who's on a lower level head. Like you shrink that gap, it's easier to serve.
So the two groups that have probably been hurt the worst were last year's seniors and then this year's seniors. Because this group graduating now, they're gonna go into college or grade school behind. And I'm actually wondering, I'm, I'm hearing that like enrollment in local universities is down quite a bit. I'm actually wondering if that's affecting kids not wanting to further their education?
So having some kids, knowing some kids in that area, um, they're not wild about what they went through. They don't want to pay twenty-five thousand dollars to have that replicated. They're sitting it out. Now, the concern is, you also know those, I'm gonna take a year off, typically never go. Um, I, my opinion as well is I would hope they would be exploring other options as compared to a four-year traditional college, um, because you can be job ready in nine, twelve, eighteen months, depending upon the particular trade or license you may go after. You can be gainfully employed with, with minimal debt and we don't need to bury our country in trillion dollars of deficit for free school. But in any event, um, I think there are a couple of things at play. One, they didn't like that format as, as a student, so they don't want to pay for it. And two, I think they're looking for other options, but I'll defer again to those who are working on a closer level with the kids. Mark, any thoughts on that in the high school?
Um, well, again, there's been kind of a push. When you talk seniors and, and kids who've graduated two years, the last two years, there's been a large push. You're absolutely right, college enrollment is down. So much limits where I said it, there's also been a large push to get kids back into the trades and to do different things like that. Um, but I have to say, if we talk about the groups that have been hardest hit would be those early learners. And I, Dan and I talked about it and Nicole, like, the kids who came in to COVID as a kindergarten kid and those, yeah. Their first two to three years of school have been completely disrupted. I mean, I don't, I'm an elementary teacher by trade and to teach a kid to read online remotely, or to teach a kid, again, consequently on another side, the, the other group that we think is, I think is the most severely hit. Like, look, high school kids, they're more adaptable to work online. It's not ideal, we're not having the same results we had, but they're able to do a lot of that online. Was that, that K to two group, um, has been, has pretty heavily hit. Now, we, we've seen through our scores, that upper level elementary rigor in math, that like five through eight grade span has been pretty much, I don't want to say the word mall, but it's been such a, a, those are difficult contests. Multi-step problems to teach, um, and then you've seen some socioeconomic plan to that. So, um, if I had to say that two biggest areas is the hit, obviously that K to two group, um, and then that, that middle level math area is the second one because it's such an abstract from numbers and operations to algebra, geometry, solving bases, you've got multi-step equations and teaching that, um, to those, those groups. And again, Nicole talked about it earlier. Kids are going from being secluded at home, limited social interaction, to now coming back fully immersed. And we've been very fortunate to get our kids back as much as we had, have. Um, but a lot of social and actual action has been, um, facilitated, um, to say nicely. And, um, maturity is, is at a different level where we, we've seen things that, you know, I, I talked about the seventh grade coming in all the time. Ms. Phil and I talked a lot about some of our, our issues we have with seventh graders. And she says, oh, these are usually things we see in the elementary school, most stuff that you normally see for seventh graders. So, um, a lot of it's just been that, out of that public gathering and things like that. You're right, colleges have been taken hit. Like, we're, we're going to see a couple of different colleges this week. They're finally getting kids back onto campus. I assume it's for, I'll take in two bucks, founder Ross Morse next week. We're going in my board report, we're going to Y S U, um, to see a new program they have. So they're starting to now open themselves up and allow people to come back in, hopefully get some more.
Five percent.
Five?
Five percent.
As the, uh, factory, the theme, uh, judges come to see how, how the college is, uh, out, uh, uh, with the, with the propaganda and so forth. The Eli three, the senior this year is, uh, so, I mean, every day there's a bill and five things for Eli to try and go to. Come, they come to our college. And, uh, and it's kind of humorous because I never heard of something this.
Yes, I know.
And they're local. It was like, uh, the, the, the college of Timbuktu and I've never heard of it. But no, they're, uh, they're really out there trying to, uh, force the kids to get, to get back into it.
Yeah. Any other questions for Dan? Mark, I'll let you choose, do you want to be Nicole or you want to be Mark?
Nicole's online.
Oh, perfect. We'll go with Nicole then, or you want to go Mark?
Go Mark.
Go Mark.
All right, well, mine will be short this week, we talked about a few things, all right. On Friday, last Friday, we had a pep set week, um, getting back to Louisville, Mississippi. And we celebrated a lot of the different, um, championships and championships we had. So recognize the high school varsity football team, varsity volleyball team winning the section. Um, we recognize junior high girls basketball eighth grade, winning that championship. Uh, we had a junior high cross country runner, Aiden Mack, win the junior high championship. Liz Sherman going on to state cross country this weekend, she's finally. And then we had a couple runner up, runners up, which is still something to, uh, hang, nothing to, not your nose that. We had seventh grade girls basketball, had a great season, runners up this year. And junior high football undefeated season ended up being runners up in that family also. So it was nice to see kids back in the gym together, having, having a good time while honoring the, the student athletes. Talked a little about this earlier, on Thursday, we're going over Y S U, they have a new E T C program. Actually, look straight there, they're opening up. So we're gonna go over and tour that to see what that looks like and how that concerns our students. And finally, we did that, so it's basically, they're looking to do a little bit more of on-hand learning, um, getting students into the workforce through, I believe, like two-year degrees or through certification.
They're partnering with Eastern Gateway Community College. It's, it's a pretty sad move. You can be there and go two tracks. You could be earning college credit by taking Eastern Gateway courses, but also you could be taking skilled trade courses. And those skilled trade courses count as Y S U credit. So at the end of two years, you could be in a skilled trade that ready to go with an associate's degree, or you can continue your education, um, to Y S U. So, um, this is a brand new center, the director's in his first year. I actually knew, uh, from other, other things, but, um, he came over and we had a conversation. Mark and Matt jumped on the opportunity for this tour and I'm, I'm pretty excited to, to, to see what they can do. It, it's in very many ways, you know, there is a pocket of kids that should go to a four-year university. Definitely yes. There's a larger pocket of kids who shouldn't. And I'm not saying that because I'm anti-academic, but there, there, there are other, there are other avenues of education. And, uh, with, with what Y S U is doing with this Eastern Gateway Community College, providing this opportunity for the associate's degree, providing this opportunity to earn college credits for the skilled trade. I, I think it's a great move for a large pocket of kids. And I think, quite frankly, to your point about survival, I think it's a great marketing move for Y S U. I'll give my hats off to Jim Tress.
I think Clarion has had a program, as we told you, who's getting a associate's degree online, correct? I think Y S U has that also. That's what you're talking about?
Yeah, so like, for instance, what we've seen is, we've gotten some feedback with students. Let's say you want to go into CAT, you go to the Pittsburgh Technical College or somewhere like that. And at the end of your two-year degree, you want to go on to college. Well, those colleges have affiliations with other colleges, but you can't just, this program is kind of unique, like Mr. Rich said. You can go there to earn your two-year degree and at the end of two years, if you have an inkling you want to do something more, you want to do something different based upon, you know, how, what you've seen in, in life or how the market's changed or whatever. There's no more applying to a different school, you're already in that program. The credits you already earned counts worth that next, going from a two-year degree to a four-year degree. So again, it's taking something, it's taking two different tracks of education in line and the merger one at the end of, at the end of the two-year program. So, uh, you know, Bush Minister did something similar, it's with the nursing program. You know, they told, they partnered with Jameson, Jameson had their own individual nursing program now. They go through, you get that four-year degree, um, you know, so it's just.
Kind of like Slippy Rock and B C three with their P A program.
Exactly, yeah. So.
That's actually one of the original questions, which is about the founder and the in-class. Technical people who, who you like to work with, I mean, as compared to lecturing type, uh, universities where, uh, you know, A, U N L H has, had all of the legal, the advanced, uh, the recent type, uh, high performance of others. And all kinds of programs, and they, they have nursing centers as well. The, the whole concept behind this is for the kids to learn actively using their hands and practicing skills rather than training. Uh, through all through the lectures. And then after an associate's degree is reached, then you have options to take, carry on. This is where entrepreneurship is really kind of the hand. I mean, can they really run their own business shop or do other shop that has, takes, carries on and learning how to, how to put, put together a four-year degree with, uh, supplement by, 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 uh, group, uh, uh, being with it, so.
This would, this would be the perfect type of place for a modern gym. Their website is, I just pulled it up on the, and I want to briefly read part of the description in that the E T C is a one-of-a-kind workforce education innovation and research center focused on advancing manufacturing. Career pathways will include traditional and non-traditional certifications, industry-recognized credentials offered in a wide range of areas such as manual and CNC machining, industrial maintenance, robotics, automation, and additive manufacturing.
The thing that's, the idea is if you see kids out there that don't really want to go to school or, and their reasoning is that it'll come, some of the lectures, sitting in a lecture or classroom and the training that, that ends up in a, in some form, a degree that they.
Well, while you're over there, I think it's what a truck driver's school is. It's actually, those kids will get a job quick.
You're actually gonna pass a truck driving school on the way there. Pass Newcastle School to train C D Ls in the right way.
Are, are we still having, um, same number of, of college courses available for kids to take in the classroom? We expanded that program at all?
So we added, this past year, we added Red Sox College, the University of Pittsburgh, and we added, we actually took our honors to the two class, was originally a Stevens Hill Prep class, and we switched that over to the university. So we're looking to, again, if Mr. Rich and I were talking about this today, you know, and he's gonna talk about this next week with the, uh, how we've changed things. how we've changed things as a high school. And a lot of it with kids, you can't continue down the same path. You have to continue to look at student interest in colleges, universities, or programs that are going to get kids that step up to the next level. So again, we continuously kind of look over that and change that every year.
But I think it's a good move of getting anything again into pit or the C T L on transferability. The layout.
Turn up and then we got to get a pit.
So that's that's the ability to transfer the credits. The deal credit is not going to.
No, and we like we really like the pit program because you're taking University of Pittsburgh exam, right? So you're being held accountable like we talked honorific two for eight exam. It's a two hour test. There's no bones about it. This is test four times a year. You're taking these two hours, University of Pittsburgh exam. So we're going to do something nice with the kids. They have a lab built in and then the lunch in the middle. So we'll feed them out while they have to take this test because that's it. It's not like a it's not, you know, Holman does a great job. I mean, he teaches at a level where it is college university. But when you're looking at how your kids are going to school, we want to know that, okay, we're teaching them at the college level. They're being tested at the college level. And this is when they go to college, they're going to be seeing the same exact materials and and exams to be writing for that.
Thing that 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 I find that I've found so far is with with these courses, even if you're successful transferring into the credits into where we want them to go to school. I I I think you could you could put the program on and have the best program ever. But the college, if you're if you're looking at honorific, I mean, you're trying to transfer that in as physics one in college. The schools are what I found. Bring the courses in, okay, and add credits for them.
Right. And I think that 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 goes to what what Kevin was saying again. When we when we first started doing this, we brought all these local universities in and kind of interviewed them to see what they were. And you know, Seton Hill was um very, it was a very competitive program. They had a lot of good things to say, but we knew what we were getting with Seton Hill. But it gave us a a test in the right direction. We added a lot of college credits early on quickly. Um and like you said, a lot of them do transfer depending on where you're going. If you go to that university, you transfer them to school. But um but then we transferred the next step was to go to a larger university like University of Pittsburgh. We didn't talk to Y S U, West Virginia University, they're outside of the state, so they'd have to pay the five thousand dollar um fee to apply. They're not only that why they're not really. The first year we went to Y S U, I thought there was a. Not with P D. Oh, yeah. So Y S U gives us in-state tuition, but P D will not reciprocate. Let them be a golden moment facility. That's actually what I brought up as a wonder to doing Y S U. Yeah, so we talked about Y S U, the five thousand dollar, five thousand dollar fee they have to pay for P D with thirty five in credit. But it's it's looking at, we've talked to, that's they we talked to a couple of larger universities out out here. Because we want, again, we want to make sure that when we're preparing students for college, like like you said, it's nice to have some of those um elected credits out of the way when you go to college. So you're not wasting your time taking some of those that swap classes. But when you find things in your major, again, University of Pittsburgh, we've had a good track or less track right with. We added sociology, psychology, um honorific two now. Those things transfer in as an credit because they're coming from the way that still they're further in other universities.
I think my my one is uh given like before. Let's get a few course. Wonderful.
Great.
Well, they want the money.
They want the money.
They want the money.
I would I would say.
All it already is.
Exactly. I I would say in order of acceptance, well, obviously it is easy, three or better university standard. But we we've also talked about the next level because it is difficult. You're in a classroom a year, you got one test. The next level is definitely the university pit college and high school. And in my opinion, I think I think Mark's is very similar. Everyone else is a runner. Again, that's something like what we partnered with West Virginia, they get kids in, they do that. That early admit program for the nursing program. So anything you take prior to that, if you commit and sign to go in that program, they're going to accept it. Because you know, they know they have you for three years to that nursing program. Instead of four years, you're going to come out. So colleges have started to be a little bit more flexible over these last couple of years because back in the sixties and the seventies and stuff. Then everyone was down and you know, I remember going to West Michigan, was there a person to the right, was there a person to the left? One of them talking to me during the graduating. I think that number's making even larger than people enrolled because as you wish said, who's going to college paid the twenty five thousand dollars? They got that same online experience and they're like, I'm not getting back for a second year.
But they did not go to West Michigan.
Not.
If you didn't ask that second year, then let me.
Yeah.
Call it to that. Let's let's not try to leave the lot of them.
Greater than eighty percent of all kids that declare their major change their major.
At least once.
Once within the first two years. It's a profit.
You wish you'd have thought of it.
I do. Okay, anything else, Mark?
Yep.
Any questions for Mark? Mr. Nicole online.
Hi, everyone. Um I hope you can hear me.
Yeah, I'm clear. Thank you.
Okay, um being in both buildings, I'm going to end up repeating some of the things that Mark and Dan had shared. Um of course, the elementary had the family night and it was a big success. Um what I loved about family night is that um the students were encouraged to facilitate activities with their parents. So that part was nice for the teachers just kind of let it. And then the students got to work with their parents on on different activities. And it was nice to see them around the school reading with their their child. Some were in the hallway, some were in the courtyard, some went out on the playground. Um middle school last week did their house day. Um it was filled with a lot of team building activities. As Nicole Bell mentioned, S E L during COVID is um a big topic right now because these students are really missing that social interaction um from the past year, year and a half. And so these team building activities really help teach them to work together in groups and earn points for their their um houses. Um Dan and Mark both mentioned that our benchmark and diagnostic assessments are completed. And we're conducting walkthroughs to observe the instruction, engagement, and assessment. So just like we talked earlier with the ninety minute reading blocks and filling in the deficit with the flexible grouping, we're able to go in and actually see it in in action and 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 view what is happening in the classroom to tie it all together. Um also, on our um extended day in the morning in the elementary, we had um Hagerty um phonics program training. Um Dan um scheduled that with um uh the intermediate unit to come in. And that's K through two. I attended that training and it was a really good hands-on training that it's just to help build that foundation for those students K through two on um short ten-minute lessons um throughout the week. So it doesn't, it's not a program that there's spending a lot of time on, but they're getting exposure to those phonics sounds um daily.
Okay, any questions from Nicole? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee.
Yes, um Mr. Frangel provided us with a new home. We're now located in room four oh five at the high school, so we moved out of the old stockroom. Our server room hasn't moved, our operations. So what that did is that gives us an actual working lab. That is important because we're in the process of developing a SWOT team. SWOT stands for students um who advance technology. And and working with Mr. Walzer and Mr. Frangel, we actually have one student who is coming down um twice a week. And um you know, the goal would be to have that student uh part of our team, learn concepts, learn how to work on machines, learn um you know, just nuts and bolts of it, um to complement the robotics program and some of the other things that's going on within the district. So that's really exciting. I want to thank Mr. Frangel for that because it really put us in a nice spot. We also have received uh our E C F devices. Those are the devices that came from the emergency connectivity fund. Those devices are in our air are in our possession. We're in the process of processing them and will be distributing them to those who responded to the survey that were sent out. The way those devices work is those are tied to specifically individuals who responded to the survey and said that they had an unmet need. So those will be coming out. We're imaging them, prepping them, and they'll be out in the hands of people very shortly.
How many?
Uh we had two hundred Chromebooks, another hundred uh Microsoft Surface devices. So we have a nice influx. The thing with that though, like I said, has to be tied to the to the individual student. There are some stringent requirements and record keeping, but it was most certainly worth the time. We also are um also completed many of the district assessment coordinator tasks to prepare um for winter keystone with Mr. Frangel and also preparing and planning for P S S A's. We launched our S M S campaign with, and by that is the text messaging portion with our new mass mass notification system. That was intentional later after the school started based on their recommendation. So we sent out communication and that is available. That's an opt-in program and there is information on the website on how to do that. But if you have any questions from from uh from families, have them reach out to me. I'll give them explicit instructions. It's really simple.
So that is that's an opt-in?
Yeah.
And it went home with every child?
We sent it home. Sent it. I sent a ma- actually, I sent an email and posted it to the website as well. So there was information and there was an all call that we sent home.
They all call?
It's been an all call. Uh lastly, we had a hundred forty seven tickets in in the month of October, new tickets. Those are ones that were actually reported. Um and our average response time is five hours and eight minutes. Average resolution time was four days and one hour.
Any trending of what those items are, the hard hardware issues, software issues?
It's all over the place. Mr. Patterson, it's all over the place. I you know, um it's that old adage, eighty percent of them or eighty-five percent of them are pretty simple. And that uh you know, that last five to ten percent are a little bit more complex problems. That's ones when you walk in the room and they say, oh, I fixed it myself or I figured it out or it just started working. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Yes, Mr. Carter.
Um couple things. We've finished the audit. For the most part, it's still preliminary. Like I wasn't able to file the A F on because the annual financial report is yesterday. Um we uh at your places, I have a preliminary summary of there's two two reports. One gives me a little bit more detail, which is about three or four pages. And the other one is just a fact back of the summary executive summary of A U college. If you have asked me a complete before, the backside of that is how that compares to the actual.
Budget versus actions. I'll just take the backside of the summary.
Right. And then um then like you said, the multi-base um report just shows more detail within each of the parts. If you have any questions about that at all, please review it, ask, um we can go through even in depth next week. Um it is still preliminary. I want to stress that only because um the auditors will be here in January to present our final uh statement. And uh if they specifically like to meet with them for that, um if they're available in December, we'll try to get them here. But they'll be um in January. Um wanted to also mention that we're going, we are a force chosen for administrative review by the service department.
Hey, we're chosen.
While everybody gets chosen. Um ours is gonna happen in January, but there's an off-site portion that's due by the end of next uh session, I think. Um so we're tackling some of that. It's a lengthy um information gathering and uploads to, excuse me, the um Carrie's portion of P D E's website with this self-service department side. Um so Carrie, myself, and Mallory will be all working on that end of the week and how they're private all that uh wrapped up. Um and then when they come in in January, they'll look at the actual um procedures that are going through the county launches, how more detailing if the meals are eligible for reimbursement. And it's unbelievable how much detail is involved. It just blows my mind every time.
I don't, you know, I don't understand. I don't understand.
They.
Yeah, I'm part of it, but there's so much.
Right, you know. It is. I don't know.
Yeah, it's yeah. And the last thing I wanted to mention is um Ed and I met with um Tim Todd, I missed him, Tim Todd, uh Monday. And we've been having a couple getting his dust mop replaced by the company that we have currently. And tried to call them, they won't respond phone calls. We're determining if we have a contract that we can get out of based on either length of time or the fact that they're not responding.
Yeah.
Um and if we do, or we're able to do that, we go to Tim Todd's website first of all. And um it will be an agreement with them or an additional agreement. There's a huge to our agreement with them, it's been held extended. But I just wanted to give you that that was hoping that it happens. May even happen for next week, next week, maybe, but I don't have any of the documents.
They come to you.
Pardon?
Send us guns.
Right, and then we already have them for our math.
Yes.
So if they're not fulfilling the contract, we should be able to end that service without any extra payment.
I'm thinking, yeah.
Unless the guy's in the hospital on a fence, then you can't really.
Yeah.
Phone calls.
Yeah, so we felt.
Yeah, there's another big company. I mean, they should at least return the phone calls if you have a problem.
Then on this, I only had three things. You don't have to answer now. But whenever we go over it, purchase services, student activities, and technology. Obviously, the three big overs. I was just curious, yeah, to yeah, like on the purchase services, it's three hundred and twenty-three K.
Uh the the summary.
Mark is over.
The budget versus the actual.
Yeah.
On the on the side, then then on the on the actual side, long side, it just expresses the differences. So if you're trying to figure out, you know, if you want, if you want to just land and say, hey, I'd love to know a little bit more about this or that, take a look at this section right here. And uh and because you know, on the income side, you know, that was uh in the late hundreds thousands, you know, it's a little bit different.
Yes. What is?
It's a little bit of everything.
Full letter, full letter.
The way that this. The way that this. Um so it's just, it's um anything from someone that comes in to take a test or water to uh it's basically anything you think someone else can do.
Yeah. That's what I, it's basically outsourced.
But um yeah, I'd like, I mean, I do want to go through some of the the bigger differences. Basically, we brought in and most of the federal funds, um around uh four hundred thousand dollars more in income and spent.
That was including that.
Those aren't, that's, I struggled, I'm going to tell you again, I struggled with coming up with what was in this category going, trying to.
They don't exactly match your object, correct? No, they do not match your object.
What I'm going to ask perhaps relative to that, so you're speaking apples and apples. Maybe maybe make some time so you can explain exactly what you did to try to match that. And because Jim, who else was instrumental in in developing Steve? Maybe you took a gig with Jim and.
Why don't I go through and tell you what I put into those numbers?
That's probably the easiest.
That's probably easier.
Is um, if I'm one target.
And 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 embarrassed Jim, right? I never expected this to line up object code to object.
Oh, my gosh, no.
You wanted a lame and summer.
This is for the public's consumption to understand where the money allocation goes to.
And and and. I do think that it's a wrap. It's visually presentable. That's all I wanted.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions for Jim? Mr. Rich, do you have anything?
No, like I said, I'll be um, going over the longitudinal analysis of Pittsburgh Business Times two thousand six.
Right, after all this, any comments or questions for?
I have one thing um, that's not on my head during two presentations. Uh, people inquire with me regularly about um, about. Well, we uh, it always opens with schools, elementary school, I think, for watching and playing time. Get back on.
It will be.
What was the normal time?
I think we always just had approval in December. We approved elementary, I mean, high schools, basketball and elementary law.
Perfect, so let's go through the rest of it. So like I said in the beginning, we will be approving the minutes next week uh, from October thirteenth. We will also be going over the treasurer's report that Jen so kindly sent to us. Is there any questions on the treasury report? Investment report. We'll be going through the bill listings. List of food services, fund bills. You two, would you like to share?
What?
Sorry. I know. Short timer. Okay, I'll stop there. Uh, board action items on personnel. Uh, gonna make some recommendations for salary, for school district police. Darren.
Swiner.
Swiner. Danielle Moffett. Uh, school police officer rate, twenty dollars an hour effective on receipt for clearances. Uh, student teachers, proven following student teachers from Slipper Rock. They all look like they're from Slipper Rock.
Yep.
Yeah.
Notice we have one more regret. I think more, right? Uh, we'll also be covering P A tax, uh, collector's convenience. No T S R conventions.
Can I just make a quick note about that one?
Yeah.
We last reimbursed Mr. Throwback, who was our smart conscious um, tax collector in two thousand nineteen. He was attending um, the last in-person conference of their lives. They are required, you have so many convenient hours to keep you, and you use this for the walk. Um, we reimbursed him, he said fifty percent of his class at that point and he was a question. I don't know whether it was after the fact, but um, it is, it's already happened. So I just wanted to give you background, so we did do this before. What about break?
The others, the others conscious students as well.
We don't have.
Were they grandfathered, anything?
I don't know. Yeah, yeah. He does, but, right. Um, we do have, we will have any.
Oh, that's right. I would, I would ask that we put it in writing to them, that you can't come to us after the fact, you have to come before. Make sure it's not just a verbal. Uh, assistant varsity girls' basketball coach. Uh, Mr. Mercantino. Half, half step one salary. Those rate would be fifteen, thirty-seven, fifty. Uh, high school cook helper. That's nicely, nicely. Professional development workshops and seminars. Angelo would like to attend C D E instruction practice. Questions on that?
Are they certain to have something on plate again? Yeah, yeah. So we um, as part of the student workforce, they want us to get out and present all that we did. I'm doing the same, so they're paying for the room.
Additions to the volunteer non-instructional substitute listing. Each will be retirements and resignations. We have a couple of those.
Anybody in there that fries or, oh boy.
Uh, Brittany got a, got a job at a university. Uh, Brooke is having another baby. Miss Wade, detention supervisor. I guess, but I was hoping I would have done the same thing. Yeah, yes, oh yeah, oh yeah.
Saw him a few times.
Not you, Bob.
More effective, I'm talking.
Uh, Angelo, I don't know about Angelo.
He got another job.
No, I, but I didn't put the replacement on it, so uh, that's my name.
For all of you complain, try living with the principal. And being told to grab the end of your bed, look straight ahead.
That was your dad's favorite line to me.
When you were seventeen. Getting that belt, I would have preferred a paddle. That leather hurt.
I remember when I broke his paddle and he made me go make him a new one.
He replaced me with um, Bill Jones, my father. I will add that to my name.
With Bill Jones. I need an address and who was one with that one? Okay, um.
I've been a volunteer, so.
Okay, uh, I am ten will be committed to home, uh, so field trip. Uh, for the kids to go to the fire department and got. Uh, we also have the dental plan renewal for the district. Uh, the cost remains the same. And then new business. Comments, questions?
Yeah, I wanna do uh.
No, go ahead.
You went to the floor before I got to hand. Um, I, you know, I don't know what I did. I guess it comes up now, could have come up earlier in in discussion book. You know, I know I've heard, seen, heard as well as seen some comments on things about some of the rigor and testing that we're doing at the high school level um, these days. I know I don't have kids in school here anymore, however, you know, not so long ago that I did. Um, and I amend what we're doing now and I think it's, and I hope that it's an improvement in preparation for those kids who do go on. Makes it more representative of what we're doing and um, you know, I don't have a voice here on this board for very much longer. But um, I'm pleased with what you're doing and don't be shaken by those who are pushing back and saying it's too much and and too much. Um, there's a reason why it's being changed and I think that everybody needs to know. Um, and it's for, it's for the best, it's for the kids, it's not doing this to be rough on the kids, it's knowing to prepare. That's the goal, I mean, hair, they can say two things. One, use my juice. Anytime you do something, there's a three plus five. Two, storming, or norming, and then the performance. Make a change, there's gonna be a storm. Then it needs to be a norming process and then a performance. I am a firm believer that students will rise to your expectations. Your expectations are here, you set them higher, over a period of time, you tension up, you accelerate, they will, they will reach those standards. So if it is college prep, then it ought to be.
Grade thirteen.
Well, you did bring up a good point. I mean, did we communicate to the community effectively enough in regards to the change in how we create? And why we made that change? And how it's truly a benefit to the kids? Instead of having fifty kids out of a class of a hundred, all be I R role, which we all know in reality, when they hit college, that's gonna be a huge cost.
So it is just about two, you know. Because number one, it's already been into the end of the year. And so it's, it's reactive, like, trying to do it very well. And now I'm being told to try to, cause of them. So I, I, I get where they're coming from. I, it kind of seems to me that they aired it out on Facebook and had the truth, uh, the truth.
And I, I, I did, I just, it wasn't part of a beginning of the year orientation video pushed out, all you know, some lard and meat, bread and milk. And had, had it not caused any irritation, the communication would have been blocked. So, no, I, could we have always done better? Of course, of course. But um, thank you for the support on that. You probably didn't know how how it reflect things either. I would imagine, right? We, not like you do.
Exactly what would happen.
But we, no, we think, I think there'd be pushback. And and Mark and I had several conversations. Um, first of all, imagine this being a teacher, you know? You're seeing your average achievement in a college prep or an A P course as far as the translation to a letter grade perhaps decline. Because things other than assessment have been lessened or minimalized, right? So I don't care what we would have done, there would have been a degree of pushback by the teachers, by the kids and by the community. I think everything about that is totally worth it because when these seniors go to their institutions of higher learning and come back and see their younger brothers and sisters and friends and says, now I understand. That'll be the case, because right now, I believe I've heard it maybe once, twice, maybe a thousand times about kids leaving here with accelerated grade point averages and going to college and whatever.
Well, I think part of it's that, Lynn, I think the other part is helping people understand, right? Cause me and you, all three of us have had kids leaving here, go to college. And at Laurel, their GPA was four point five. But at the university, when the university looks at it, they go, no. Your GPA as weighted by our, if our thing is says it's a three point two five. So I, I think that's an important aspect of people.
Let's uh, take it to a, to another direction or or have feedback from another perspective. Let's say that everybody will remain silent for the smoke and one complaint and everything looks fine, everything will roll forward. Then our only judgment on whether or not this was, as it's seen in practice.
Practice?
Is next year or or whenever, when they.
It's about to go, you know.
You know, over the, over the course of time. Now, we have that supplemented by. I'm not doing very good anymore. I mean, I'm not trying to be mean, but but I'm, I'm trying to say, you know, whether it's everyone, major, where they belong.
Oh, no, I'm not saying we change what we're doing. I'm saying whenever there's pushback, usually it means.
I'm just tired because I'm not gonna have a voice for very much longer.
My thing is always there a better way to communicate, right? And my point is if you communicate well, will you have a small group? Yes, when the group becomes bigger, nine times out of ten, if you communicate your message. You left something out, there was, the way you brought it across, been reached, it's your idea.
It's all, it's all in the handbook and all in the first of the year communications. And how many of us, they just told me where I need to sign them, I was just going like.
And I don't, I don't, I don't think those numbers make sense until they were experienced. You know, wait a minute, I did all my homework, congratulations, it's worth fifteen.
Okay, that's it. Thank you everyone for coming.